Good afternoon, folks. Today is Wednesday. Hallelujah. And it's February 5th, 1:00 p.m. for the Committee on Water and Land. And we're in room 229. Just some housekeeping measures as well. For the testifiers, including those on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. If your all testimony is different from your written testimony, the time limit for each testifier will be two minutes. And this, just to share that the members on the committee, particularly when it has to do with the agencies or the departments, there might be some dialogue. So we'll give them an opportunity to be available for continued discussions as well. So other than that, the oral testimony, the time limit for each testifier will be two minutes. The hearing notice, copies of the bill's testimony can be found on the legislature's website. And the video stream of this hearing can be found on the Senate YouTube channel. Thank you, members. I know we're all scrambling this week and next week. And for those of you in the public, please bear with many of us who'll be in and out of committees anyway. So bear with us. Let's proceed, members of the Committee on Water and Land, as SB 15. And this is relating to historic preservation. It amends a definition of historic properties to require that the property meets the criteria for inclusion in the Hawaii Register of Historic Places or has important value to native Hawaiians or other ethnic groups of the state due to the associations with cultural practices once carried out or still carried out at the property or associations with traditional beliefs, events, or all accounts that are important to history, traditional practices, and cultural identity. DLNR, Historic Preservation.
Hi.
Okay.
Chair.
You know what? Here, go catch your breath and I'll call the next one.
Oh, it's okay. We were just going to stand on our testimony as submitted in support.
That's it. Okay. All right. Come, so people know who you are.
Oh, so sorry. Hi. I didn't want to... Hi. Chair, vice chair member of this other committee. I'm Jessica Puff. I'm the Administrator of the State Historic Preservation Division. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Okay. Kirsten Faulkner sends communication in support. Ted Kepalas, Grassroots Institute, sends comments. Cindy Freitas, individual in opposition. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 15? Come on up. Aloha.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair members of the Committee. Evan Oyambe behalf of Naua'au'i. Chair, I greatly apologize for our late testimony and not having that submitted on time. We did just want to provide comments on this measure. And, you know, we really appreciate the intent, which is to help balance the interests at hand. I know there's a current ongoing backlog in the department, which is holding up, you know, a substantial amount of permits for projects across the state. So, you know, we do appreciate the language that is proposed. One comment that we did just want to make is that, you know, based on the current historic definitions as proposed in this measure, we're concerned this may create an additional layer of review prior to, you know, and we're worried about having additional delays included. So I do apologize again for the delayed testimony and I'll make sure that gets to you on time. But thank you, Senator, and Vice Chair and Committee members for the opportunity.
Well, you know, it's something that we like to hear, you know, comments or whatever, in particular with historic preservation. But Jessica, come on up. And, okay, you've heard his comments. And so we understand, you know, the role of the office. And so with your support as well, and you've heard the comments made, any suggestions or comments you might want to share as well? Will this be a disadvantage on this measure or part of the language or?
I think in Shipti and DLNR's opinion, the language in the proposed bill actually tightens the definition of historic property, which would limit, in our opinion, what permits come to Shipti for review under 6042 or what state projects are required to come to Shipti for review under 68. The current definition of historic property is anything that's 50 years old or older. So that means just because something's old, the county would be required to submit that permit or the state would be required to submit that project to us for review. In this instance, the county can make the determination on whether it's just old or if it actually meets the determination of historic property, being that it's eligible for inclusion in the state register. So not only is it old, but it has to be significant in order for it to come to us.
But it gives the counties to make that determination or recommendation.
Exactly.
And I think that's the intent of the measure to kind of clear a lot of the work to me. Now, I think what I hear you're saying is that it may be cumbersome or with all the measures before Shipti. But this, the language in here does not overload you or increase the amount of your work before you?
No. No, it would not increase our workload. It might shorten if a review is required, say if a property owner or project proponent is not sure if their project is historic or not. It may shorten their review simply by having an inquiry in terms of whether or not their property met the definition of historic property. And then they wouldn't have to submit the whole scope of work and permit and all that.
And that was the intent of this measure is to make things a little much easier and have the counties also get involved.
Yes. All of the counties are now what's called certified local governments. They've been certified by the National Park Service to have their own historic preservation program. And we're working with them to get qualified staff to help vet the permits.
Yeah, because that's, you know, that's a kind of adverse opinions that come from our constituents out there. Not only that, now that, you know, we need to get housing done as quickly as possible and all we're saying is, can we at least streamline some of the work that we do?
Exactly.
But, yeah. Okay. All right. Questions, anybody? Since we got them here and this is a real hot topic and we'd like to make things at least a little easier with the agency as well. And we're kind of proud that in these last couple of years that we've increased the staffing at Shipti. And so, yeah, we can talk.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Okay. Thank you so much. Yes. Happy to see you here. Okay. Anyone else wishes to speak on SB 15? Okay. Hearing none. Let's continue on to SB 19. And this is relating to DLNR. It appropriates funds to establish positions within DLNR's Division of Aquatic Resources. Brian Nielsen. Aloha. See you.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair members of the Committee. Brian Nielsen, Administrator for Division of Aquatic Resources on behalf of DLNR. Just want to say mahalo to the Chair for introducing this bill. We stand on our testimony in strong support. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Steph, anytime you have questions, Brian is here. So thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Malama Pupukea Waimea, Jacqueline Laynow, okay, in support, Ocean Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Ted Boland, okay, always here in our committee. We, okay, stand on your written testimony. Thank you so much. And Gibson, also testifying for the fishes, with comments, Hawaii Ocean Legislative Task Force in support. And we have Purple Maia, Jeanette Verdic in support, Ron Tops, and Uilani Laico in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 19? Hearing none. We'll proceed with SB 145 relating to Declaration of Water Shortage and Emergency. DLNR.
Aloha, Kakao. Deputy Director Kira Kahane for the Commission on Water Resource Management. Will stand on our written testimony, but I'm available if you have any questions about this bill.
Thank you. And in support as well?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Board of Water Supply. Aloha. Aloha, Ernie.
Aloha, Chair. And my apologies for late testimony today. Ernie Lau, Board of Water Supply. We stand in support of this measure and mahalo the Commission for also requiring it be adopted by rules to allow for greater transparency and public input. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. And just for those that have, are really concerned about the water issues throughout the state, but there was an interesting dialogue on television this morning on the water use and cost of water on the island of Maui. If you haven't seen it yet, you'd be interested this afternoon to continue to hear the debate that goes on with water usage and prices on Maui in particular. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 145? We'll proceed with SB 244 relating to parrot fish. Amends conservation and resources law to prohibit commercial sales of parrot fish that have been caught by spearing and the spearing of parrot fish in state waters after sunset or before sunrise. Okay. DLNR, Brian.
Aloha, Chair. Brian Nielsen on behalf of DLNR. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted Boland.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Ted Boland for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. So what's the big deal about parrot fish? And why am I here to talk about them? They are a very important fish for preservation of coral, which is why the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition is concerned about them. They're like lawn mowers. They chew up and eat the algae and other things that smother the coral and kill it. So it's very important to have a sufficient supply of these. Unfortunately, they are greatly over... They're greatly depleted in areas like Oahu that are heavily populated. And so we need to do what we can to save these fish in order to save the reefs, which is very important for saving ourselves. So parrot fish are, seem like a small thing, but I think this bill is a good step to limit their taking. You know, people shouldn't be fishing for them at night anyway because they sleep. So it's kind of unfair. And during the day, it doesn't affect commercial. It just affects people. People who are not commercial can still spearfish, but it just affects the people who are trying to sell and the people who do it at night. Reasonable step in the protection of these fish. I hope you'll adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Gottfried Akaka on Zoom. Aloha, Gottfried.
Aloha. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Aloha.
Yeah, we can hear you, Gottfried. He froze. Froze? Okay. Is it on his side or ours? Okay. Gottfried, can you kind of work with your?
Customary and traditional practice.
Okay. We missed hearing you. You were frozen for a while, Gottfried. Proceed.
Okay. Sorry. Let me, I'm going to start walking closer to my house so I get connection to the internet. But anyway, I represent the Native Hawaiian Gathering Rights Association Organization, families across the state. You know, our customary and traditional practices is catching fish. That's what it is. It's not wearing one molo and using one bone hook because everybody's family fishes differently. And throughout time, the Hawaiians have found innovative ways, especially my family, the Akaka Ohana, and my wife's family, the Mawai Ohana, and many of our families throughout the state. We have adopted innovative ways to catch fish. Catching fish and eating fish, preparing fish for our families in our backyard is our traditional and customary practice. So this is banning a form of gathering. Night diving is a very important form of gathering for people, you know. The herbivore proposal came across statewide, blanket wide, even for Molokai when it wasn't necessary to limit two Uhu per person per day. And when you look at the stats, Maui has had that rule implemented for over 10 years now. And there's no change. No change. So the global warming issue that everybody keep bringing up is a scare tactic. One of the presentations that I received was the scientists telling us in a presentation, because of the increase of the CO2 levels in the atmosphere, it's interacting with the ocean and causing acidic levels to rise and the reef is dying. They cannot even explain that sentence. So I'm asking you guys, you know, we're in opposition and I'm asking you guys to please kill this bill. It's just another attack. The environmentalists are continuously just attacking fishermen. And predominantly, these fish, Hawaiians, local people eat these fish and we survive on these fish for our families.
Okay. Thank you, Gottfried. Mahalo. Kathy Gogel sends communication in support. Edwin Wadamura in opposition. Ocean Legislative Task Force. This communication, members, we do have in support 26 opposition of eight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this measure, SB 244? Members, any questions? Senator Alafonte?
Yeah, question for Dar, Administrator Neeson.
Staneta Inouye.
One second, please. Yeah.
Staneta Inouye.
Yes, who's on Zoom?
Clayton Kubo.
Clayton.
Clayton Kubo, Waimea, Hawaii.
Okay, Clayton, can you, one second. We'll get back.
You can take his testimony.
You can, okay. All right. Proceed then, Clayton. Sorry about that.
I am in strongly opposition to this bill. Just last year, we had a bill to protect forms of gathering. Some people gather the way they gather. How can you basically continue to keep telling people, no, you cannot, no, you cannot, no, you cannot? To be honest with you, parrot fish eats coral. So when people continue to say, oh, it's not fair because they're sleeping. I tell you what. What is the right way to gather them? Then during the day, when you can wound them and they can run away? To be honest with you guys, is fishing is a form of gathering, no matter which way, so long you, so long you kill the fish in a humane way. Nothing wrong by that. I never did lose a fish when I was night diving. And I can reiterate that. I never did lose a fish. So when people say, when people say, oh, it is not fair.
Clayton, thank you. Your time's up.
Put it on a table.
Clayton.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Mahalo. Is Phil Rarick in, on Zoom?
Not present, Chair, but we have Kim available on Zoom.
Is Kim available? Kim? Proceed.
Yes, I'm here. This bill reads parrot fish prohibition. No person shall make any commercial sale of parrot fish that has been caught by spearing. We have a commercial parrot fish fishery that is managed and allows the take and sale. You want to essentially ban a method of take that has virtually no bycatch, is precise, and is a traditional form of fishing. I oppose this. Next, you want to ban night fishing. When you manage the resource, how quota is implemented, they are the most efficient and accurate methods of take should be used. If there is a quota or a bag limit, what difference does it make if they want to catch day or night, spear or any other method? You need to manage the resource, manage the fish and the habitat, not the methods of take. So I oppose this bill, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Kenneth Martin on Zoom. Are you there?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Alafonte.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Administrator Neeson. In your testimony, it mentioned, it alluded to rulemaking. Do you guys have rulemaking in relation to Uhu?
Yeah. Thank you, Senator Brian Nielsen again, Administrator for Division of Aquatic Resources. So we just completed rulemaking for herbivores a year ago, December. So we, as you heard in the testimony, we recently passed statewide rules establishing bag limits for Uhu. So it'd be a two per day. And then also special restrictions for commercial as well. In addition, two weeks ago, the board just passed rules to ban night spearfishing in Mauna Loa Bay. And that was a real community-driven effort by fishers there that had concerns about the population and the level of harvest there. So that would be 11-year ban in Mauna Loa Bay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 244? We'll proceed with SB 427. And this is relating to land leases. This prohibits the state from leasing any public lands or extending the lease of any public lands to any individual, corporation, or federal agency that is in arrears in the payment of certain monies to the state noncompliant with a consent decree or memoranda of agreement with the state that requires an environmental maintenance or remediation with regard to the subject public lands or convicted of a crime. This also requires certification by the Office of the Governor before the issuance or extension of any federal lease that the individual corporation or federal agency is in good standing with the state provides that if any existing lessee of public lands is found, not to be in good standing with the state as of the effective date of this act. The lessee shall have three years or until the end of the lease term, whichever is sooner to correct the violation or the lease shall be terminated. DLNR on SB 427. Aloha, Russell.
Good afternoon, Chair Inouye, Vice Chair Alafonte, Russell Tsuji for Land Division. We submitted our comments, but primarily what we say is that we think existing statute is adequate and the protocols that the Board of Land and Natural Resources follows, we think is adequate to cover, to assure lease compliance before any extension or new lease is issued. Because currently, under the existing law, the, if a lease is, you know, there's, lease is terminated as compared to just because you owe a certain amount of rent, people fall behind in rent sometimes or other noncompliance. Under the leases, we're required to provide officially notice to the lessee about the violation and a time to cure, a minimum time to cure by statute. Sometimes the cure period goes beyond and the outstanding violation is still there. But the board would have the discretion of whether, you know, to terminate at that point or to maybe allow additional time, let's say if money is owed, to come up and borrow the money and then to pay the rent. So we think to achieve the objective of what I think the board, the bill is about is to assure compliance before any extension or lease is granted. That already happens under existing law to the existing statutes. And available for questions if you have.
Any questions? Thanks. Appreciate, appreciate the comments as well as the procedures already been applied then. Okay. All right. Tanya Ennisazian, Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support. Let's see. We have 19 in support of this measure, one opposed, and two with comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on SB 427? Members, any questions? Otherwise, let's proceed then on SB 457.
Oops, sorry, Chair. We have one present on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Who do we have?
Dave Monix, Greenpeace Hawaii.
Thank you. All right. Proceed, Dave.
No, thank you for hearing this legislation. Yeah, there was quite a debate about this at the last committee. And all the concerns and questions were answered and they forwarded the bill. The big concern is that there are a lot of toxic things that have happened that were not, that, you know, like the military, like Red Hill, that sort of thing. You know, even though we have these leases and we have the laws, they are not complying all the time. And so it's important that we have, that we deny maybe some of these leases that are not being properly taken care of. So anyways, there was a big debate about this in the last committee. And they, in the end, decided, yes, we should move it forward. And that would be a good idea because it's something we need to discuss more. Things like Red Hill and things like Pakalua. There are so many places here that are so toxic now. And these leases just keep being extended. And we need, they're not cleaning it up, right? The military's not cleaning up the messes that they make. I mean, Koalau is still contaminated. So thank you so much for hearing this. Please pass it forward. We just need to keep moving forward to do what we can to protect our ina. Mahalo, Nui Loa.
Dave, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You mentioned that this measure has been heard. Is that at the House that had an earlier?
Yeah, I was in, I think that was in the Senate. That was just yesterday.
Okay. This is the first time we're hearing this measure.
Oh, okay.
I was curious if the House measure was moving along.
Yeah, I think that that's right.
Thank you as well. Russell, I have a question for you. With regards to the decision-making on, as you mentioned, and the rules that's already in place that the board addresses, including in, does it also refer to violations protecting the environment?
Any violation of the lease?
So the environment as well is taken into consideration?
We have some provisions related to cleanup and environment, yes. In leases. The gentleman spoke of Red Hill. We don't have any lease at Red Hill. That's such a...
Yes, 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 yes. Okay.
And Pakalua, keep in mind those, some of the military leases, Pakalua in example, is a real old lease. It's issued in 1964.
That's correct.
So some of the provisions today are probably more robust than what was had in back then. But there is some reference to cleanup and we're sure that there's cleanup requirement on the lease premises.
And the older leases like PTA, And the older leases like PTA, then if there's the request for extensions going forward, the new rules will apply?
Well, the board would take that up and we would inform the board if we knew of any issues that need to be resolved before the extension. Again, the extension for Pakalua has not even come up. They're still going through the environmental assessments, environmental.
When is their termination?
2029, military leases come due.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Cindy Freitas on Zoom, are you there?
Not present on Zoom Chair.
Patricia Green. Melinda Sanodopale. And Susan Gorman Chang.
All not present Chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Is anyone else here wishes to speak on SB 427? Hearing none, then let's proceed to SB 457. This is relating to state lands and this establishes penalties for failure to comply with certain submerged land reclamation regulations, adds requirements for presently reclaimed land to be disposed of by BLNR without recourse to public auction, to an abutting owner by sale or by lease, and it provides requirements for the Board of Land and Natural Resources, or BLNR as we know, to lease state submerged lands and lands beneath tidal waters. And I do know with regards to actions of DLNR is pretty strict as far as I know in the years I've been here. DLNR.
Chairman Chair, Vice Chair, and Senator Decore, Russell Tsuji again for DLNR Land Division. Again, we submitted comments, but primarily what we're saying in our comments is that we believe the existing statute and the protocols that go before the Board of Land and Natural Resources are adequate. Because I can tell you, before any land disposition and typically along, if we're talking about submerged land, we're talking generally the shoreline, but almost 98% of those are going to be involving structures that are sometimes like seawalls, sometimes with vetments, stuff like that, within the shoreline. The board, if we find that it exists and it has not been authorized by the board and it's within the shoreline, within state shoreline waters, the staff, together with OCCL and the State Surveyor get together and they evaluate whether the structure is, you know, it can stay or is it affecting the shoreline that negatively, for example. But if it, and in those instances where we find that it is, that we ask, usually it comes always, they ask the homeowner to please remove the structure. We would not be recommending to the board to issue an easement. What, those that go to the board for an easement for, to allow the structure, and these are existing structures, not new construction, existing structures to remain is when OCCL usually makes a determination that the area is already hardened, for example, and it would, any kind of, if it was to remain, it would not impact the shoreline any more negatively than it already is. So some, and sometimes when you take out a wall and the whole area is hardened, it affects the neighboring properties and the stability of the wall in general. So, you know, these are all existing under current law and that's the practice of the board since I've been there, which is almost 20 years now. So we feel confident that existing statute is adequate.
Aside from properties that are considered, like as you mentioned, that you monitor those walls, what about those properties? As an example, like if I remember Kona, where you have some of the restaurants that are in submerged lands and the structures are pretty much kind of like wood. Yeah, and they're in the water as well. And I guess it's no different than like in Kaneohe Bay where you have those, I guess, the moorings. When someone has a boat and they have their own platform, what do you call it, a moorin?
Pier.
The piers, yes. Okay, and some are in the wooden structure. How do you manage that?
Well, as far as the piers overhanging, like in maybe, sometimes maybe in Kona, I know we have them in Front Street because I went to visit there, right? And in Front Street, as an, I'll use that an example because I just went to Maui. To specifically look at the area, because the owners who are the shoreline, abutting landowners who own the land, a lot of times in Fi Sipo, had piers out there where the restaurants are hanging over into the ocean. So many of those had easements in that area. But in that instance, when we went out, we noticed that the, the only thing that was easement was the piers, not the wall.
Right, right.
And the wall was, I would say, in relatively good condition. So they were asking about whether they would be allowed to, whether the board would entertain the possibility of rebuilding the structures. And we, you know, after we, I reviewed the statute and met with them and talked with them as with the Maui Planning Commission, we, I told them, I think there is a process in place that they could apply, they would have to go through a lot of permitting and stuff, but at the end of the day, there's nothing in the statute that would prohibit it in part because the statutes currently do not allow new construction if it negatively impacts the shoreline. This is not one of those because there's a pier, there's the wall already, the whole area is all hardened, yeah. And this is only the overhang portion. Similar, in Kaneohe Bay, we have easements out there for, or a lot of those piers.
And regularly on the termination of their lease, they come up and you do your due diligence and we kind of approve the additional extensions.
When they come up, many, many of those are still on the original term, I mean, but then, yeah, I can see at some point the timer will come up and at the same time, when it comes up, they ask for an extension, I believe we would still follow the same protocol right now, is check to make sure, can we extend it without negatively impacting the shoreline or should we not allow it?
All right. Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? It's good discussions. Thanks so much for being here. Ted Boland on 457? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 457? Hearing none, we'll proceed with SB 740 relating to special permits. Authorizes the Land Use Commission to designate another agency, including the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, Department of Agriculture, or Agribusiness Development Corporation, to monitor compliance with any restrictions imposed in a special permit. Okay, Office of Planning. Don't see Mary Ellis here. Sense Communication with comments. Land Use Commission. Also comments, Department of Agriculture.
Department of Agriculture, says, written comment.
Okay, thanks so much.
Offering assistance to the land use.
Okay.
In agricultural matters.
Okay, mahalo. HPD, Kerwin on 10. IT, anyone on Zoom?
None present on Zoom Chair.
Okay, testifying for food and policy internship 2025, Julian Kiabu. In support as well. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 740 relating to special permits? Hearing none, we'll proceed with SB 839 relating to DLNR, or the Department of Land and Natural Resources establishes a criminal penalty and monetary fines for aquarium fishing violations. Clarifies that each fish or aquatic life specimen taking in violation of certain fishing laws regarding aquarium fish and the possession and use of prohibited explosives, electrofishing devices, and poisonous substances constitute a separate offense. Okay, DLNR, Brian, you're busy today. End this session anyway. Thanks for your indulgence with us and being present.
Aloha Chair Brian Nielsen, on behalf of DLNR, we stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Okay, and members, any questions you have of Mr. Nielsen? He's free as well. Ted Boland?
Flight Region Ocean Coalition will stand on our comments in support.
Okay, Inga Gibson in support. Kim on Zoom, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, Chair. If a law is broken, then a law is broken. Filing penalty should be the same. If you take an undersized polay to eat, the fine should be the same if you take that same polay and keep him as a pet. It is the same violation. This bill is equivalent to a drunk driver getting pulled over and the officer asks if he drinks Scotch for a $200 fine or beer for a month in jail. It's the same violation. There are constitutional issues with this bill such as the Eighth Amendment that reads, quote, excessive bail shall not be required nor excessive fines imposed nor cruel and unusual punishment inflicted. If that does not apply to this bill, maybe the U.S. and Hawaii Constitution of the Equal Protection Clause, it states unequal application refers to the disparity in how laws and policies are enforced among different groups or an individual. Clearly, this bill does that. If the intent is to deter illegal fishing, then expand this to all fisheries for equal application. If the intent is to violate constitutional rights and impose cruel and unusual prejudicial fines to a minority group, you succeed with this bill. I oppose this bill on violation of constitutional rights and I believe in equality under the law and so should you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Mahalo. Eric Koch on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom Chair.
Thank you. Brian, question? I know you extensively had some comments, but so the law that we passed in 2022 that became Act 35, so that pretty much kind of clears up a lot what we're talking today?
Yeah, we rely on the tiered penalty system for violations that we take to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. So the aquarium violations that I'm aware of that have happened within the last five years have all been taken to the board and they use their discretion to apply those penalties, up to $1,000 for specimen is their discretion.
And the rules and everything has been in place as well?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, this would be pretty much what we're hearing today is pretty much addressed by the department, it seems like.
It can be addressed by the department, the courts, I think that might be another story.
Okay, all right, thanks so much. Any questions for Brian as well? Okay, with this, there is support, two with support, there's four oppositions and two with comments. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 839 on this measure? Hearing none, let's proceed, members, to SB 1018 relating to real estate transactions. And this requires a seller of real property adjacent to the shoreline and the seller's agent to disclose and include in all advertisements, shoreline erosion, certain issues related to the parcel. SB 1018. DLNR, Michael King.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chair, Senators Michael King. On behalf of DLNR, we'll stand on our written comments in support of this bill. It builds off of a previous bill the legislature passed requiring enhanced disclosure for shoreline properties. And we find that this one, right now, the disclosure is at the end of the process. This helps move it up towards the beginning. Thank you.
Okay. So you support this measure?
I wish to plug it, thank you.
Okay, all right. Hawaii Realtors, Lindsay Garcia. Aloha Lindsay.
So Hawaii Realtors, we do appreciate the intent of the measure to educate buyers and we do take that very seriously. However, we would like to point out this bill could be cumbersome to implement as it focuses on the ads where there is very limited space to try to properly educate everybody about everything there is to know about shoreline and flood risks. Through our existing forms, sellers must already disclose important information such as whether the property lies on the shoreline and if there are any erosion control structures in place via our seller's real property disclosure form. Furthermore, the Oceanfront Property Addendum is a document that we proactively created with the help of the legislature in order to educate buyers about these risks of buying shoreline property and includes a lot of very detailed information in plain language about shoreline, what that is, sea level rise, high waves and tsunami inundation zones specifying that future improvements may now be encroachments on state property or in the future. There's also information on whether state shoreline certification is going to be obtained, whether that will be currently with the seller, if the buyer is responsible for it, who's going to pay for it, like, there's a lot of information already provided for the Oceanfront Property Addendum. And so for that reason, we don't believe that, while we appreciate the intent of this measure, we don't believe that it is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. There are 11 in support of this measure, no opposition. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to SB 1018 before us? We'll proceed with 1083, SB 1083 relating to port infrastructure and makes appropriations to DLNR to conduct maintenance dredging at state small boat harbors, boat launch ramp facilities, and waterways. And this is throughout, this measure recognizes all of the small boat harbors within the District of Management of Dobar throughout the state. Dobar, Megan Stats.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Megan Stats, the Administrator for the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. The department stands on its written testimony in support and we're here for any questions.
Interesting. Do you have an idea what the ballpark figure, looking at, you know, the ports, the pier, I mean, the small boat harbors that's under the jurisdiction, kind of like looking at all the different islands, what we're talking about cost-wise?
The dredging costs anywhere between three to five million, just depending on how big of a task it really is. Like Pohuiki, for example, I think we're up to $9.6 million for dredging over there.
And then we just finished Hilo.
Right, and Waialoa itself was about $4.9 million in the end.
I think we went to three something, three point?
It was 3.2 and we supplemented that with about $1.7 million of boating special fund. And we did the same thing about almost 3 million that we had to supplement for Pohuiki due to the amount of debris that's going to be removed. So I think when we talk about like Maalaya, for example, I think we're talking like 4 million, Lahaina's about 5 million, Mala, we haven't gotten the bids back for that yet. That could be about, you know, 2 million just because it's a smaller project. So it really just kind of varies on how much we're having to dredge. And if we can do it on a more routine basis, then we're not getting to the point where we're at, right?
Sure.
Right, proactive rather than more being reactive.
So we're looking at what, 25 mil or so? And it depends, because it depends on the dredging and everything else that has to do with the seasonal sand that comes in. So you may have, in Hilo as an example, you may have it happen every three years or four years and it just depends, but it's good to have a cushion for you folks to have something available and immediately take care of the issue.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so it seems like traditionally has been like finding CIP monies to help you whenever it happens and it's not a good planning project for you folks and as well as for us. If the resources can be there, we don't have to get after you guys.
Right, we definitely agree.
Which we normally do.
We definitely agree. We rather would be proactive and be able to plan ahead of schedule, plan everything that we need to so that when the dredging needs to happen, that we do have the funds there.
Yeah, and this is something that I think we all should be concerned about because, you know, these are used by fishermen as well and, you know, they need to survive as well. And so, and a lot of them are food timers. Senator McKelvey?
I just wanted to know, previous conversation with your engineers, they said another advantage of this would be with permitting with the feds, that you could go ahead and basically by them knowing what we're going to do, if we can work, would that be safe to say that this would be another advantage of a measure like this is to be able to do pre-permitting, especially at the federal level with these agencies?
Yes, correct. We've spoken with our engineer Finn McCall. And if we can do the design and permitting prior to needing some of this, we have everything in place, so we're not waiting months, if not a year or so, for some of this permitting that's been coming in.
Especially with the multi-agency review thing.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the director.
I think we're all experiencing these issues. Okay, we all pray that measure passes and we all can assist. Thank you so much for the work you guys do. Okay, on Zoom, Denver Grun. Aloha Denver.
Aloha. Afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Denver Grun on behalf of the Ocean Tourism Coalition. I agree with everything Megan just said. A lot of times we see reactive bills. This is very much a proactive bill and we are in strong support of it.
Okay, thanks Denver.
No problem.
Okay, we have six in support of this measure, no opposition. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1083? Hearing none, we'll move on to SB 1084 relating to DLNR. This appropriates funds to establish positions within the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Aquater Resources. Okay, one more. Okay. Brian Nielsen.
Okay, aloha Chair Brian. Okay, aloha, Chair, Brian Nielsen. Again, DLNR, we stand on our testimony and strong support. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Malama Pupukea Waimea in support. Ted Boland is here. He's gone, but he sends comments as well to continue to support Hawaiian Ocean Legislative Task Force and an individual, all in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB ten eighty-four? Hearing none, hey, we're moving along. SB ten ninety-nine relating to important agriculture lands. And this is authorizing the Land Use Commission to designate important agriculture lands and adopt maps for the designated lands in counties that failed to identify and recommend important agriculture lands by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. DOA.
I'm very excited about this morning offering comments.
Okay, thank, thank you. Land Use Commission sends communication as well with comments on this measure. Farm Bureau as well, comments. Cindy Freitas in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB ten ninety-nine? Hearing none, all right, members. This concludes today's agenda. We'll take a recess. Thank you. The Committee on Water and Land is going into its decision-making on its hearing notice of February fifth, Wednesday, in Conference Room two two nine. With regards to SB fifteen relating to historic preservation. Chair's recommendation that we all, one second, one second.
You can ask her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we're comfortable in support, yeah? Yeah, 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 okay, sorry about that. Yeah, Chair's recommendation on SB fifteen is to pass this measure relating to historic preservation as is. Okay, members, any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Senator Alafanti.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB fifteen unamended, Chair Noe.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Decord.
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB nineteen relating to DLNR. Chair's recommendation on this measure is to pass, will be defecting the date to July first, twenty fifty, as well as blank the appropriations amount. But this measure will be moved with amendments. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments SB nineteen of the five members present. Any no votes, any votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB one four five, this is relating to declaration of water shortage. Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB one four five unamended of the members present, five, noting five. Any no votes, any votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. SB two four four, this is relating to parrot fish. Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. Moving on, SB four two seven. Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure as well. And most of all that's been discussed on this issue already is in place. SB four five seven relating to state lands. We'll defer this measure as well. And it seems like BLNR already has its, the resource, not only the resources, but all of the rules and the guidance on what has been done to leasing submerged lands has been in place. Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. Okay, SB seven forty relating to special permits. Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended SB seven forty of the five members present. Any no votes or votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB eight three nine relating to DLNR. And this establishes the criminal penalties for aquarium fishing violations. This as well is already in place within the agency. Chair's recommendation is to defer. SB ten eighteen relating to real estate transactions. It seems like things have already been addressed in all of these issues with regards to real property, the seller's real property disclosures as well. Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. SB ten eighty-three relating to port infrastructure. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this measure. Will be defecting the date to July first, twenty fifty. And we'll also, I think this one didn't have a dollar amount, so we, we'll move the measure as it is. Okay, Chair's recommendation then is to move, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair for the vote?
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments SB ten eighty-three of the five members present. Any no votes or votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB ten eighty-four relating to DLNR appropriation for positions. Chair's recommendation is to pass with the amendments that we're going to defect the date to July first, twenty fifty. And I think this does not, I think we have this blank anyway on this measure. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB ten eighty-four with amendments of the five members present. Any no votes or votes or reservations?
SB, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, they had the position interview? Oh, okay, okay. Yes, okay, we'll go back to members on SB ten eighty-four. Aside from making the amendments with a defective date, that will, all of the positions recognizing the measure will be all blanked as well. Okay, thank you. SB ten ninety-nine is at where we were, members?
We've got to go back and vote on SB ten eighty-four, Madam Chair.
Okay, SB ten eighty-four, that's the measure we just talked about then. Okay, with amendments. Okay, any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass SB ten eighty-four with amendments of the five members present. Any no votes, any votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. SB ten eighty-nine, or ten, I'm sorry, ten ninety-nine relating to important agriculture lands. Chair recommends that we pass this measure as is. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended SB ten ninety-nine of the five members present. Any no votes or votes or reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thanks, folks. Okay, let's go to the other committee hearings. Okay, Water and Land, adjourned. Thank you, folks.